Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March Agenda Meeting for the Prince Edward Planning Commission. We'll call the order to meet, call the meeting to order. I'll go ahead and take a roll. Mr. Fuller?
Present.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Leatherwood?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mrs. Sandlin?
Here.
Mr. Weiss?
Here.
Mr. Womack?
Here.
Mr. Pringman here. Okay, we do have a quorum. I'd like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes from last meeting. Has everybody on the board had a chance to review the minutes? I've reviewed, I don't see any changes on my end. Does anybody have any changes? If there are no changes, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? So moved. Second?
Second.
Okay, we'll take a roll again just to vote on a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Womack?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Leatherwood?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Minutes have been approved. On tonight's agenda, we do have four public hearings. Before we get into that, I just beg everybody's support on the public hearings. When we open the public hearing, we will first go to anybody that signed in to speak. After that, we'll come to the audience. But for everybody that wants to speak, we'll ask you to come up to the podium, state your name, first and last name, where you live in the county, and then we ask everybody just to limit it to three to five minutes, no more. After the public hearing is closed, then the board will go ahead and discuss the motion, and we'll make a decision whether or not to pass it on to the County Board of Supervisors or not, or actually table it. So I appreciate everybody's support on that. If we can go ahead, Mr. Love, if you could give us a little overview?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we have received an application from Tim Bomer, I hope I spelled that right, I said that right, for special use permit to operate a storage shed manufacturing retail facility on tax map number 018-8-32 at 5865 Prince Edward Highway, Prospect, Virginia. This is a former Noah's Pet Shop. This property is on A1 agricultural. This use requires a special use permit in order to locate on this property. This public hearing was duly advertised and formally heralded. Joining property owners were noted, sent a letter, you have a sample of that in your packet, as well as a list of folks I sent it to. I went, folks behind it, beside it, and across the highway, the foreland highway. Again, the purpose of this is to locate a manufacturing facility. The applicant stated that all activities which take place inside of a, would be a new hundred foot by a hundred foot building that would be built on the property if this application was approved. He is asking for two signs, one a pole sign and one is a building sign. And after I typed my agenda items, my cover sheet, I did get from the applicant the email with the sign schematics, you have those in there. So they're a little different. One of them is a either forty-eight to sixty by ninety-six to one-twenty wall sign, and then the other one is a twenty-four by twenty-four double-sided roadside sign. So that's a little bit smaller than what the site plan showed as far as the roadside sign. B-Dot had looked at this and didn't have any issues with it. So they said the entrances could be reused for this use. I'd be glad to answer any questions the commission might have with me. The applicant is here.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Love?
I have a couple, please.
Go ahead.
Regarding the signs you just mentioned, the standalone sign, pole sign, or you mentioned also in your report about monument sign, would they be lit signs?
I'm not sure. I think we need some clarification from saying no. I think the one thing we don't have on here that we do need some clarification on is total sign height of that circle. So I think we'd get some clarity from the applicant on that. So I'll kind of defer to the applicant on that because that sign schematic came in Wednesday when I was preparing the packet. So I didn't have a chance to reach back out.
But what's been submitted is a pole sign.
That's correct.
We don't know that, but it's pole, not monument.
Yeah, and you noted, I did note in my staff memo that what y'all have been doing on this corridor, like for the quarry asphalt plant, I mean asphalt plant, and the New Dollar General down there, you've been doing monuments on it.
Yes, that's correct.
But a pole sign could be allowed in the district. So I'll let the applicant talk to you about that. That is one issue, you might want to have a discussion with him on that.
That's in my notes also. Anybody else have any questions or comments for Mr. Love from the board? With that, would the applicant please come up and, oh, I'm sorry?
Just, I have a question about the hours operation. It's six to six, and it's ranging on a quiet hour at 6:00 a.m. in the morning.
Again, it could be, that's where we would discuss if we put special conditions on it, whether we, again, decide to approve it with special conditions, pass it on, or whatever. So that would be one of the things we can discuss.
Yeah, I've got that, I've got his hours, his item number thirteen.
Right, okay.
So that's potential conditions. I listed the same conditions, but you certainly can talk to the applicant and discuss your concern on that. And these are only potential conditions, you can change them if you wish.
If you'd come on up, sir, to the podium. And with that, we are opening the public hearing. Again, we'll let the applicant speak, and then from there, we'll ask for people in the audience.
Good evening, my name is Timothy Beamer. I'm requesting this here special permit use for the Old Noah's Ark for storage and storage manufacturing and retail. The question item number thirteen you wanted to ask about was the road sign. It's a little bit smaller, it's a circle sign, it's going to be in a pole, and that pole will be in with whatever standards it is that's acceptable in accordance with your outline of signs. The sign on the building would be a dim lit sign on the building. Those are the two signs that we talked about. The building, I didn't understand or hear your question, sir, on the far side, so I can't comment on that.
I had a question about the hours operation. I see you going from six a.m. to six p.m., six days a week. And I was wondering if that six a.m. was approaching on the hours of quiet hours.
Okay. I do not know that.
That's okay. That's, again, that can be one of the things in the special conditions as we review your proposal.
Yes. The potential for this here application and special use permit is the possibility of local employment of possibly twenty or thirty employees. We're very excited and looking forward to be part of this community at the Old Noah's Ark. I don't have any other comments. Any questions?
We have a lot of construction or renovation to do, should everything go through on the site?
Yes. The construction is going to be hundred by hundred. They have to come in and do some remodeling, and it's going to take some time. And also, the Old Noah's Ark will be, have a nice uplift to it. It's going to be, it's going to be a very nice looking building that will complement both the old and the new.
How big an area do you plan to have for your showroom, or how many units do you expect to have out there at any one time? Or do you manufacture them on order and send them out? Just curious.
Yes, the retail side of the house, we are the manufacturing. So they'll be located amongst the property. To change any of the property, we're not, the existing layout works perfect for us. We won't be doing any type of land construction or moving any of the area. It's actually ideal for the site plan or the way it works out, leveling, everything that you see in your photos there.
As far as the retail areas, would that one generally sit?
Sir, it'd probably be out front, off the B-dot line, in accordance with their requirements. And at any given time, I do not have that approximately fifteen, twenty out front. But mainly, the majority of them for staging and stuff will be down in the back.
The question about the hours was brought up by the board member here. Is six a.m. still critical, or could, you know, could the business handle a seven a.m.?
Whatever quiet hours are, sir, we'll definitely comply with that. Zero six is kind of earlier.
Yes.
But yes, it's one of those things that we just put in the report.
Sure.
And all the construction will be inside the hundred by hundred foot building?
That is correct. It'll be inside.
I have a couple of questions, and I'm just referencing this site plan. Did that look familiar to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What is the building to the far left that it says future building lean to? Is that just like a storage?
Yes, sir. The possibility down the road to put some lumber in underneath to protect some of the non-traded lumber, possibly lean to down the future. At this time, they come with bags over top of them.
Gotcha. And then the big area called completed buildings on the right side, that's where the finished sheds will be placed.
That's correct, yes.
So that the future building is more of a storage shed per se, right?
The future building, the first question that he asked about the lean to?
Correct.
That was possible, that is just for?
Storage, yes.
Storage lumber, yes, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you so much, sir. We may have some questions that come back based upon the public hearing, but thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak for or against the motion in front of us for a storage shed manufacturing? Is there anybody on the phone? Okay, thank you. Okay, we can close the public hearing portion of it. I will make one comment, it's nice to see that some activity will occur out there on that site. It's been a little quiet and stale.
Center of the building sitting there.
Yes, yes, very much so.
Yeah, I think it's a good business for that property.
It is.
I agree with the hours maybe.
Yeah, possibly seven a.m. would make more sense. The one question about the signage, from the board's standpoint, consistent with what we're doing on that corridor, we've always leaned towards a monument sign. I think that's something we can discuss here, but I think from the board's standpoint, at least the way we've been talking, is we'd be more apt to consider having a monument sign there than a pole sign. Just to, again, to be a little bit more consistent to whoever coming in on that corridor there. Would that be an issue for you?
Sir, no, not at all. I mean, we're just with the rest of them better, but then recently put up?
Yes.
So we would have no problem with just?
Terrific, thank you.
Yeah, I think that would be more consistent with what's?
What we're trying to do there.
Admittedly, there's a mix of signage, up and down four sixty, but the, more of them are the monument.
Yes, but with all the opportunities for new business, we'd like to be consistent with the monument sign in that area. Any other comments? We have the hours, we'd like to consider, instead of six to six, we'd like to consider seven a.m. to six, does that sound fair?
Yes.
And then move to monument sign? Any other potential conditions that we want to add or change?
Clarification on the lighting too, is the sign lit? Did we figure that out?
Is your sign lit?
No, it's not lit, correct.
That's correct, sir. Sign is not lit.
Okay.
But on the building, you said it was dimly lit?
Yes, although dim lit sign on the building, yes.
That's consistent.
And that's consistent with what we're doing now? Okay, thank you. Okay, if we don't have any more, any other questions, we'd be looking to, for a motion to?
Sir, I have one more.
Oh, yes, sir.
Sorry for that. To request the zero six a.m. in the morning to six p.m., it is very hot to start, and if there is no quiet hours at zero six, the fellows that do work inside that building, it's out of a question then to work in the hours, adjust the temperature and things like that. That's why we request the zero six.
Okay. If all the work's going to be done indoors, that would be a question as far as the, you know, we can certainly stay with seven, we don't have an issue there, or we can, is there?
No, in general vicinity, there's not a real residence.
Right, there really isn't, no.
John, I have one question.
Yes.
Because your building will be insulated.
Yes, sir.
It will be.
It's insulated.
I'll take care of all of them.
They should take care of the noise.
Not cut a lot of the noise there on the outside.
Okay.
Well, just going by existing type facility that's out there now, there is noise early in the mornings, and trucks unloading and so forth, heavy equipment. So that was one of the reasons, since I live in close proximity of that location, I know about it.
Sure.
And so seven does sound reasonable.
If the?
And there, and one other thing, John, also.
Yes.
There are, there's a subdivision that's on, I think it's Roadie Road?
Yes.
That's right behind that location. So yes, there are a lot of homes that are close proximity to that building also.
One suggestion for the board then would be possibly go seven to seven, that would still give them a twelve-hour window and?
Yes.
I know that may be a little challenging for some of the people in the heat, but I think it would make you better neighbors in the area there.
Make sure they're pleased.
Yeah, how does that sound to you? Would you agree to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're looking at seven to seven, monument sign, and you have a copy of the conditions already, don't you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other suggested changes or conditions from the board, other than what Mr. Love has put together for us?
I have a question for you, Mr. Love. The first, I think this is a broad question about item ones under site plan and conditions, the meaning of incidental facilities. I know that's not unique to this project, but?
That's correct.
The final location of incidental facilities, what are examples of that?
All the buildings. If something had to slide because of, this, it won't affect this site, but if we were dealing with a site that had stormwater or grading issues, we could let them slide a building on, the same size building on the site in a, in a location that didn't violate a setback if they had to move that. So for instance, if the hundred by hundred doesn't have to move, the hundred by hundred technically is an incidental building to the, well, technically to the, to the existing building. But the lean to could be off of the, off of a different side if they didn't want to, if they had an issue with grading. This, this site's not going to have any real issues.
I got it.
But that's a standard verbiage that I put in there, and it does come into play on certain sites.
Especially with?
Yeah, I know it was standard, I was just wondering how, what it meant.
Yeah, but just let, he's locked into the size buildings he's requesting, so it lets us slide some things around. If he wanted to move some of the stuff within existing framework, without violating the setback, without messing up a buffer.
Thank you. Staying in the boundaries, yes. Anything else? With that, do we have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, we'll take a roll again. Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Leatherwood?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sandlin?
Mrs.
Mrs. Sandlin, I'm sorry. I'm trying to read here, I apologize. I owe you one there, I apologize.
You already messed up Mr. Weiss already, we'll go there.
Yes, okay. And Mr. Womack?
Yes.
Okay, motion is passed, we will move this on to the County Plant, County Board of Supervisors, and Mr. Beamer, thank you so much for your time, we appreciate it, and good luck.
Yeah.
This will be heard at the April meeting of the County Board of Supervisors.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for the Elam Road Solar Project. Mr. Love?
Yes, Chairman, members of the board, we have a special use permit that's been applied, and as part of that, a prerequisite, we're supposed, planning commission should, under the state code, section fifteen point two dash twenty-two thirty-two, conduct a review to make sure that the facility, its location, its character, extent of site is in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. This is a application, the company Sun Tribe Solar Development, doing business is Elam Road Solar, ALC. They are looking to construct a three megawatt community solar facility on a thirty-three acre portion of tax map number one oh thirty-one A sixteen. That's, that total parcel's one hundred and thirty-six acres, this is the thirty-three acre north triangle portion of that parcel. Public hearing was duly advertised, adjoining property owners were sent notification letters, looking at the existing conditions, sites mostly timbered agricultural, single-family residential homes in the region, and I've had no calls against, or against this application since it was filed. The applicants are here, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have with me.
Before we open the public hearing, are there any questions for Mr. Love? Would the applicant be so kind as to come up to the podium, just give us an overview a little bit?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Give her, give her a T, folks, one second to get the, there we go.
Can you guys hear me? All right, I think the black bar at the top will go away. Good evening, thank you guys for having us tonight. Again, my name is John Townsend, I'm representing Sun Tribe Development here. So thanks to the planning commission for hearing the project, and thanks again to Rob, planning staff, Mr. Stanley, everyone of Prince Edward County. For this portion of the public hearing, this is the twenty-two thirty-two comprehensive plan performance. I plan to present the full scope of the solar facility, so we can talk about the whole thing and answer any questions. There we go. So just briefly here, Sun Tribe is a local developer, our founding member lives in Virginia, the main office and most of the employees live in Charlottesville, that's where I live, that's where I grew up. So our team is very cognizant of how development impacts our state as a whole. Sun Tribe has tremendous experience nationally developing responsible solar facilities, and that last bullet point mentions the Shine Program that Sun Tribe founded, and that's a workforce development nonprofit. So here's a brief overview of some of our team members. The team has years of experience developing projects in Virginia and on the East Coast. Sun Tribe has partnered with schools, municipalities, local governments, and nonprofits to provide energy solutions. I'm here with a couple of colleagues, Trevor Francis, our VP of Engineering, Avery Clemens, one of our engineers, are here as well to answer any questions and address any concerns. One quick sort of process question, do you all have printouts of the slides in front of you? I'm not sure if you're able to read.
No, we do not.
Okay, so I will, I'll make a point of highlighting the things that are on the screen and my notes, so just noticing that as well. All right, so here is an overview of the project. The facility we are proposing is up to three megawatts with no battery storage component. For context, that could power up to five or six hundred homes locally. The site itself is located about three and a half miles west of Prospect, west of Elam Road, and south of Highway four sixty there. As Mr. Love mentioned, the parcel itself is one hundred and thirty-six acres, and this project is proposing only about twenty acres in the northern corner of the site, but the entire project facility and the fence line is about that thirty-three acre number, so about twenty-five percent of the total parcel. The project will be a good neighbor, it will be screened, there'll be no off-site noise, and will not generate excess traffic to the area once it's operational. The image itself, it might be? Apologies. The, the image might be a little bit hard for you all to see, so I'll try and describe it a little bit. The, the facility there, Elam Road is running sort of north-south there, oh, lawsuit, there we go, apologies. The, the Elam Road runs north-south, just on, on the east side right there, the little pink triangle, that's what we are proposing as our connection point to the existing Dominion Energy grid system, the distribution lines, the, the normal power lines that run through, through your neighborhood there, that's how the power would get onto, onto the grid. You know, this sort of facility provides, you know, revenue to the county without drawing on infrastructure or services, and it generates reliable, clean electricity without producing noise emissions or increased traffic. And just commenting, there's also no permanent onsite lighting proposed at the facility. Let's see, directly just, just north of that little pink triangle, that's our proposed entrance location, that's where the existing driveway is, that's where the laydown area is for, for any parking or material deliveries, that would all happen onsite right there, so there'd be no, no parking or anything on Elam Road there. Also, a project of this size does not need any sort of large substation. As I mentioned, we would just connect to the existing lines across the street. Benefits to the county, the project is expected to create significant value and generate up to three hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue to Prince Edward County, again, without any draw on county services. Solar has many benefits to the county, other than direct revenue as well. You know, this is a local source of zero emission energy production, there's a long-term reliable fuel source, that's the solar radiation. The neighbor, the project being the neighbor is quiet, low-traffic generation, and outside of construction and decommissioning, it is a passive neighbor with constant remote monitoring, and very little onsite management required. A couple of things that are highlighted in the slide itself, the project will create temporary jobs during construction and decommissioning, and solar projects are quiet, they have a low visual profile, and again, do not produce emissions, odors, waste, dust, et cetera, during the, the operational life of the facility. All right, consistency with the comprehensive plan, as noted by Mr. Love, the small responsibly cited solar meets several criteria that are included in the Prince Edward County comprehensive plan. I've highlighted a few of them here, I think they're also included in the staff report, but I'll, I'll try and do a brief overview. The, the first bullet point here, chapter six, special policy areas on page seventy-five, this comment relates to the economic and quality of life benefits of open space and agriculture and forest land uses should be considered, and the environmental impacts of development should also be considered. It is important to maintain a balance between development and preservation objectives throughout the county. So the Elam Road Solar Facility will be developed using best management practices to protect sweet streams, wetlands, any wildlife. The project, again, occupies a very small? The project again occupies a very small portion, only about 25% of the overall parcel. And again, it provides direct revenue to the landowner and the county while protecting against subdivision or more permanent intensive, intensive, excuse me, development types. This also again generates electricity without creating emissions, odors, or waste products. Move to the next one. The other, the next bullet that Mr. Love highlighted is objective one on page 91, ensure that the county's available labor force meets the needs of existing proposed industries. This can create jobs during construction, provides local career growth and training opportunities for individuals and students interested in renewable energy in Prince Edward County. The next bullet is land use objective number one. This is page 95. Utilize well-planned site designs and effective buffer areas to mitigate the impacts of adjacent land unit uses differing intensities. The project is cited and designed specifically to take advantage of existing mature vegetation. Again, the project will have a low visual profile and quiet operation, preserving the rural character and surrounding area. The last bullet here, historic and cultural resource strategies, page 106. This comment says, evaluate the impact of new development on local historic structures and areas, support development proposals and site designs that respect and protect the character of adjacent properties. So solar is a temporary land use. You know, the projects last anywhere between 30 and 40 years and then they're decommissioned and removed at the end of life. And then when that happens, the land can be returned to the landowner and they can continue to put it back into, to ag use or something else as they see fit. And to the, the historic and cultural resource comment, Sun Tribe worked with Timmins, a consulting group out of Richmond, to do a cultural historic resource evaluation, a desktop study there. Did not evaluate any nearby cultural or historically significant features on the parcel. The project will maintain significant setbacks and buffering in many cases greater than what the county's A1 ordinance requires. We are proposing 75 feet of existing mature vegetation to be preserved along the Elam Road frontage for the portion of the property. The panels themselves are set back approximately 150 feet from Elam Road and several hundred feet from the nearest residence. The vegetation within the buffers will be retained and supplemented with new vegetation as necessary based on the landscape plan to be approved during site plan review. The goal is for the project to be screened from neighbors and public rights play. I've attached some, some photographs here that were taken in January just showing the existing vegetation along Elam Road there. These photos were taken right there at the intersection with Lee Roy Drive. Additionally, native pollinator species we planted for ground cover where appropriate, and that does align with the alternative energy ordinance for, for Prince Edward County. So Sun Tribe and the project are committed to a number of environmental safeguards and features. You know, Sun Tribe has performed a variety of rigorous desktop and field studies to evaluate potential impacts to threatened or endangered species, cultural and historic resources, and has been designed specifically to avoid any equivalent features. The use of Virginia native grasses in addition to pollinator-friendly species where practical will also be implemented, excuse me. And again, the facility will generate electricity for the community without the accompanying emissions that are commonly associated with other fuel sources. Make sure I didn't miss any of the bullets there. Pollution control measures, erosion and sediment control measures, stormwater control facilities, and all construction activities will comply with federal, state, and local regulations. For the most part, those will be entered during the site plan review process with the county. A few comments about construction, operation, and decommissioning. Construction is estimated to take four to six months and with the commission and the board's approval, would likely start in 2024 or maybe 2025 at the latest. There would be a short-term increase in traffic during the construction period. However, the project has put safeguards in place to reduce the impact of the traffic, and that does include a planned completion of the traffic management plan. And that's a condition that the county has, has required as well. And also limiting large truck deliveries to Monday through Saturday daylight hours, et cetera. During construction, there will be an increase, increase in construction noise for a short period. And again, Sun Tribe agrees with the condition to limit the construction activities to Monday through Saturday for daylight hours per the condition that was, that was recommended by Mr. Love. Once in operation, the project will not generate a measurable increase in traffic and will not be audible or visible from surrounding neighbors. A couple other, other points here that are listed on the slide, the facility, while it's not manned full-time, will be monitored constantly by, by the power company or, or the asset manager. Landscaping and ground cover will be maintained year-round, and any vegetation that is not growing successfully will be replaced by the project owner. A few comments just quickly about decommissioning. The project will be decommissioned at the project owner's expense. Materials will be recycled, salvaged, or repurposed to the extent practicable, and a bond or other surety will be provided by the project to ensure the decommissioning is funded. So it's, I just want to make sure it's clear that the project will be paying for the removal of the facility. That will not be on the taxpayers or, or the county itself. So I just want to highlight some of the takeaways of the facility. Benefit to the county, the project is expected to generate an estimated $300,000 in direct revenue to Prince Edward County and other, plus the other community. Economic benefits, the panels are set back several hundred feet or more from residences with buffering and screening to protect the view shed. Environmental protections, project uses only about 25% of the parcel for the solar array with 100 acres or more remaining undisturbed by this project. You know, from a conservation perspective, this facility will provide reliable 30-plus years of revenue to the landowner and can protect against other subdivision or more permanent development types that might be considered. The project meets or exceeds the requirements of the county ordinance. And additionally, you know, once we get through the discretionary permitting, if that is granted, there will still be additional site plan approvals, stormwater, there's a variety of other checklists that have to be met before the project can actually go to construction. Last thing I just want to highlight, solar produces no noise, emissions, and virtually no car traffic, so generating revenue and energy, again, without any draw on county services. That pretty much brings us to the end of the presentation. I appreciate your time. I'm certainly available right now to, to answer questions and to address any concerns. Yes, sir.
I'm not real familiar with the, with the topography of the site. Are you going to use pretty much the existing topography? Or you got to alter the topography? What does your site plan include to go ahead and put the panels in place? You've got seven ponds. Are they required in the site plan? Or what, what, how much action altering of the topography is required for this particular site?
So the, the actual site itself is relatively flat. And when I say relatively, I'm going to whinge up my engineer, but I think we're less than 15%, which would mean there'd be no need for masquerading. There would be some pre-removals or there would be some slight adjustment to the site, but it wouldn't be, we're not taking down hills or filling in large, large sections of the site. It's actually pretty well-suited for a solar facility.
One more question?
Yes, sir.
Have you guys considered disasters in case we have tornado twisters come through, destroy the system?
So I think probably like, like any, any development, there's a chance that, that a natural disaster could come through, that, that the safeguards that are in place are that, from an actual panel perspective, the panels are completely self-encased in plastic and basically safety glass like your car. It doesn't, it doesn't explode or break. It's more like, it's more like plexiglass, excuse me. So to your point, if a panel were to get damaged, it doesn't, it doesn't just fall apart right there. So the, the facility itself would be insured. The long-term owner is, their entire business plan is based on the revenue that the project generates. So any damage, they'd be very incentivized to repair and replace immediately to begin generating power again. I hope that answered some of the question there. I can't stop the tornadoes, but it's a, I wouldn't say that it's a, it's a hazard or anything that we're necessarily designing against.
Would you be in favor, I'm very familiar with this property, don't live very far from there?
Yes, sir.
Even probably with only 75 foot of long Elam Road. I know it's big oak timber there. There it is. Very open underneath. Could you go in behind that and put like a couple staggered rows of evergreens to block the view of the solar panels from the Elam Road? 75 foot through them open, oak woods is not very much.
Yeah, I think we could work with, with the planning staff there during the site plan process and to come up with a landscape plan that meets the intent.
In the second public hearing, we can add any conditions to the, this actual special use permit. Okay, but well mentioned, that, that makes sense.
I have a couple of questions for you, please.
Yes, sir.
If I heard you right, the interconnection is with the distribution lines across the street, not the transmission line that's in the southern part of the property, correct?
That's correct.
So how do you, maybe it's a geeky question, but how do you get across the street? Are you going under? Are you going over?
So that actually would be, would be up to Dominion, the utility company. So they will come to the facility edge, which is where our, our interconnection location is. It's most likely that they will connect overhead there. But again, that, that's not necessarily up to us. It, again, it, it would look just like your standard power line that's already existing there.
As a clarification, I thought you said the connection to the existing grid would be underground.
If I said that, I'm.
I thought said in the back. I would have received that there, that the connection from the solar panels to the existing grid would be underground.
So within the facility itself, I don't.
I think what you're recalling is a condition that where there's the connections are, if it leaves this, the site.
From the site, from the site to the existing grid?
Right.
So the, the way that facilities are typically designed, within the, the fence line where the panels are, there's no overhead lines. The lines are typically buried or they're strapped beneath the panels. That's just the most efficient, the safest way. When you get to the, the edge of the facility where the, the fence line and, and what we call sort of like the demarcation point basically between the utility-owned equipment and the project-owned equipment, typically that's where it goes to an overhead pole and then connects to the existing Dominion infrastructure. I'm sorry, I thought that was clear. I'm sorry. Yes, sir?
Discussing this with one of my friends the other day, he brought up a little point. I wanted to ask you, you know, there's a lot of emphasis on burning the ozone off. These panels reflect sunlight back. Would harm the ozone reflecting sunlight back from the ground up?
So the, the panels are actually specifically designed with anti-glare coating, and we've actually performed a full glint glare analysis with, with a third-party consultant that indicates that there's not any nearby effect from, from glare, glint, and this should not have any negative effect.
Question about the decommissioning.
Yes, sir.
The materials we have suggest it's about 40 years out from when she started operating, right? Is it conceivable that the owner-operator actually would not decommission but rather swap out panels and do that whatever the prevailing technology is at that point and just keep operating?
I, I think hypothetically, yes, but I, I think it's also important to consider that at that point, the technology might be different enough that it might be most viable to remove the facility and then start the process again. The, the designs might be that much more advanced that it would just be a different, different layout, et cetera.
With the current technology, how much, during decommission, how much can be recycled now of the panels?
So panels are made up mostly of aluminum, glass, and silicone, which, and then the steel racking material that they actually sit on. So there's already robust systems in, in the country to, to handle those raw materials. So I would argue and hope that the majority of the panels can be reused or repurposed. There's, there's a couple of other things to consider is that the end of the, the 40-year lifespan theoretically of the project, the panels are also still generating electricity. So there's also the possibility that the, that the panel itself can be completely repurposed on a different facility somewhere else. And it would just be, you know, at that point, it would just be generating, you know, slightly less efficiently than the newest technology, but it still produces power. And I think the, the third point that I would make there is that with the increase in, in solar generation across the country right now, there are solar-specific recycling companies popping up because it is true that in 20 or 30 years, there might be an influx of panels and, and the, the raw materials really do have value. And so the market is driving this growth in recycling facilities. Yes, sir?
What you were speaking about, you know, the other 100 acres of this, right, log timber?
Yes, sir.
If they ever were to harvest that timber, any ideas of maybe expanding this for an operation?
It, it hasn't been discussed. It's not, it's not a part of this project. So there's no sort of like second phase, if I think, I think that's sort of what the question is. The, the way this project is, is designed for Dominion to, you know, the local utility to purchase the power, there's actually a, a set size that it can't become larger than. So for this project, that's really not an option.
That's why the three megawatts is the number you're looking at, correct?
Correct, yes.
Is there a, a project that your firm has done recently in the area?
That's built?
Yes.
Yeah, so we've done a five-megawatt facility that is built in Flavanna County.
Okay.
That's, that's, I guess, just east of Charlottesville. We've got, you know, approved projects in Middlesex County, Halifax County, projects under, under construction in Halifax County. So I'm happy to send another list to.
That's okay. I just, I just, just curious, that's all. Okay. So you are working in the area here or have done work in the, in this area?
Yes, in fact, all of my projects are in the state of Virginia.
Okay, great.
I'm working with a lot of municipalities, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much again. And with that, we'll open the public hearing. Is anybody here that would like to speak for or against?
This is actually for the 2232 review.
Yes, the 22, not, not for the, not for the, the site, but for the 2232 review, the overall solar.
Whether, whether substantial, substantially a core which is the comprehensive plan.
Which is part of our comprehensive plan, that's all. So we really have two public hearings, a little confusing. The first part is part of our comprehensive plan. The second part will be the applicant specifically for this project. So we're looking more at the, the comprehensive plan now. That's what we needed to have a public hearing. We're required to have a public hearing for the comprehensive plan for this solar project. Yes, sir? Could you come up to the podium? I apologize.
I want to ask a question first. Did you all receive an email this morning today? There was one saying concerning the plan that I just, I can speak or I'd rather my daughter not send it, so I.
Is, is this to speak about the comprehensive plan in total or just this project? Okay, that, that will be the next public hearing.
No, this is for the, really mainly for the comprehensive.
If you could come up to the podium? Yeah, we'll need you to come up to the podium, please. The county, the county did not receive an email today, though. Okay.
So I sent it.
If you could please state your name.
My name's Crystal Hassett-Ler.
And you live where in the county?
I live in Prospect, so I live not too far from where this is planning to be. I'll read the email. So, Dear Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission Members, I'm writing as a concerned citizen in regards to the community solar energy facility that is on the agenda for this evening's public hearing. I feel the development of this solar panel facility has no substantial accord with the Prince Edward County Comprehensive Plan. The proposed parcel lies with an existing agricultural and forestal land use. If this particular facility is approved, I feel it opens up opportunities for other solar panel facilities nearby of which go against the future land use objectives as well. If we give up our agricultural land, I fear for the future of agriculture and forestry altogether. This 33 acres is small, but compared to nearby thousand-plus acreage. This thirty-three acres is small, but compared to nearby thousand-plus acres that have been sought after by other solar panel companies, it makes me concerned for what it opens up to the future of the land use. So I did look through our current, I looked through our current comprehensive plan and just two main points that kind of wanted to bring attention to where it does not go with. So in Objective Three in Land Use, which is Part Two of Chapter Eight, it states that rural zoning standards should encourage the preservation of agricultural and forest lands. So I don't think this would be preserving our agricultural land. And then it also states that it ensures and ordinances do not unduly promote the conversion of ag and forest lands to more intensive uses. So that's kind of where I'm concerned at what this can open up and further convert more agricultural land.
Point well taken.
Did you have any, did you want to talk to her?
Just, I guess, total respect for what you're saying there. That's why the county, which, and I will go back, I'm not sure how far, Rob, but the county did not have anything in the comprehensive plan really at one time for solar projects. And we recognize two things. One, we do not want to be a solar panel county, but we still have to look at what makes sense for the county, for growth and everything. So each project is treated individually with these points in mind, too. At the same time, we recognize we don't want all agricultural land taken over by solar panels. But at the same time, we recognize what a solar project does, not just for the county, but for energy. And so each one has their own merits. Nothing's done to say we're looking for solar projects everywhere. It's more, does it make sense, number one, for the county, number two, for the property? And so we look at each one individually there. So totally respect for what you're saying. No, we are an agricultural county, that's what has this county grown. At the same time, we look at how do we improve the county itself, industry-wise, population, growth, profit, improve the schools, everything, and some of these projects are looked at that way. But there is, number one, it's concern is, we're not looking to be a solar county. We're looking to each project individually, see if it makes sense. So your point's well taken, thank you very much.
Can I ask our staff question?
Yes.
Just to ask you a process staff question, you said you sent an email this morning. Could you, did you send it to the email address and the public notices that went out, it was in the paper?
Sent it to the info and to the board.
Okay, well, I will double-check that. I want to get her information, we will need that for the board.
We'll give you a piece of paper, if you could give us your information, we'll make sure we do respond and go from there.
I'll get with you after the meeting tomorrow, you get a copy of that in the packet for the minutes.
And thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question, I just want to make sure I understood.
Yes.
I want to make sure I heard you right. I heard you make two points, I want to make, maybe you made more, but I heard two. One was, you don't think this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, in short. And the second is, you're concerned about the precedence of this project regarding potentially future solar projects.
If this is allowed, then I feel that all future projects will be entitled.
And that's why I mentioned we...
Not from a county standpoint, from the business once you develop.
Okay. I just want to reassure you that we look at each project totally in an individual basis, okay? But thank you. Thank you very much. Does anybody else want to speak?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
Steve Hasdeller, this is my daughter-in-law. Just, I share her same concerns. I'm not opposed to solar whatsoever. I just, I'm opposed to large tracts of land being taken out. I'm not saying, and I'm not saying this is a large tract of land. We have a fairly good-sized farm there and we've been in contact, a bunch of people have contacted us. And our concern, too, is the future. I know there's a lot of land around me that has already been signed up by other companies. And it's, again, I agree with her completely. What's it going to set the precedent for the next one? And a thirty-acre parcel is a whole lot different than a thousand, fifteen-hundred, whatever, and that's my biggest concern. Because there is a lot of land, probably about that much, that borders me for a mile and a half, comes down three sides. What does it do to my farm, our farm, in the future? Land values. If I don't go with it, it may force us to go with it if it goes all around us. When I'm sitting five hundred acres in the middle of solar panels. What does it do to the environment? This was a last-minute comment, and I'm sorry, I'm not a public speaker. And I didn't plan for this. It was just at the last minute, we just said, hey, we need to, because of the comprehensive. I'm not opposing the other plan that they presented. I'm just sharing our concern for the future. Because I know this is going to be the next, one of the next projects is right behind me and around me. There's so many things I could share involving that, I've been on that farm for forty years. And I moved from my agriculture area and I go back down there now. I'm from Chesapeake, Virginia Beach area. There's been a lot of solar panels put in there. And one concern is the environmental impact that's done down there. There's one farm that I grew up right beside, beautiful farmland. It was about a thousand acres. And it was put in a solar panel and just, I was down there six months ago, a year ago. The place, they just cut all the ditches off, they bulldozed the whole place off. No drainage, and then you couldn't mow under them because the water sat in there. You know, that's another, my concern is where it's rolly. I understand the other project is fairly flat. On a small area, on a small parcel, you can do that. But on a thousand acres, fifteen-hundred acres, you're going to change the whole, and it'll never go back to where it was. These gently rolling hills will never be gently rolling again. Because when you pick up, even if it does go, you pick up everything, it's not going to be the same. I mean, I won't be here in forty years or whatever, but my family is. And I have a son and daughter-in-law that want to continue the farm. And that's one of my biggest concerns. The other is the environmental impact. I think it's everybody, every farmer, I'm a farmer, so I'm speaking as a farmer. Every farmer, a true farmer, loves his land and is going to take care of it best he can. And when I see, I know the mandate is to go everything green. I mean, we need renewable, I'm not opposed to solar. I think it needs to be up on, I was proud, I'm glad to see Hampton City College putting it all up on their building. I think that's a great place for it. I just dislike seeing all agricultural land being taken out. And we're developing green, but we're destroying green. We're destroying all these trees and farmland, all the grass, all the crops that are grown. That's a big green factory that nobody wants to talk about. It's all getting rid of oil and getting the sun. And again, I think solar is great, it just needs to be working with in a different way. That's my opinion, okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you for your comments.
Just for everybody here in the audience, I know you spoke of a large site. Just for the record, we have no applications, no letters of intent. I don't know what landowners are being contacted. I get calls from companies, but we have no live applications. This is the only live application. So anytime we have an application, they are mandated to have a community meeting first before they come here. So if one comes near you, you'll have three opportunities. Just wanted you to know that.
I know that, and really that was what I was planning on doing. We were still prepared.
Oh, you did good. We appreciate your input, we really do. That's what we're here for. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
What Steve said, yes, thinking, under these panels, it's grass. Does anybody graze cattle in these solar panels? Sheep? Is that a doable thing or a little ceremony?
So is sheep grazing, it's been considered. Actually, a project in Hamilton County that was proposed and approved by the county. Cattle tend to be too large and have type damage due to the management of the settlement, but sheep is an option.
The site might not be suited for that, but what you're saying is sheep is an option for, to be reviewed for any solar project. You know, if it makes sense, yeah. Okay, yeah, could be, okay. Yes, you want to come up to the podium? Sure.
So I guess, first of all, I would just echo that, I totally understand and hear what they're saying, particularly regarding earth scale development. Just a couple comments about, you know, what's materially different about our project and how we see solar. One of the first comments was about preserving the land. And we really do, and I believe this, that using solar as a forty-year sort of preservation easement, basically like this facility will be there and we are guaranteeing with an agreement and money that it will be then removed and it can be given back to the landowner. A small facility like this that doesn't require mass grading, you know, we're using a tracker system, which just means the panels will be able to rotate a little bit to follow the sun. But that also means that it can be installed on slightly more grade, so we don't have to clear, make it totally flat. Again, I understand there are projects in the state that have not been well-received. So I just want to sort of highlight that I think that this is materially different and a way for this family to protect their larger parcel from other development uses. Thank you.
Thank you.
What maintenance do you do on the site? Like once, twice a year, go in and cut the grass or whatever?
Yes, there'd be some vegetation maintenance, depending on how quickly the panels get dirty. Occasionally, there's, they need to clean the panels. And obviously, if they get particularly dirty, they don't generate the power as well. But I mean, we're talking, you know, during the summertime, if there needs to be vegetation trimming, it's every couple of months, we're talking like a one or two vehicle trips per month at the most. So it's very low use. We do like to describe it as a passive neighbor that typically if people can't see it, they don't even know it's there. That's the preference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That just raised two questions for your thoughts.
We need to have you come up, I apologize, we have to come up to the podium.
So a forty-year plan, that's understandable, so that has potential to surpass the lifetime of the property owner in which then I imagine it's a lease, and so the lease then falls down to the next property owner. So what is the plan for that? And then I don't know too much about studies of solar panels, renewable energy. It seems to be a fairly new thing going on. What happens if the profit really isn't worth the expense? What happens if the company goes bankrupt? What happens to the solar panels that are sitting there on that land then? If it's up to the property owner to then decompose of them? I just, those are concerns it raises.
The county does require a bond.
Okay.
That's one of the keys, part of it, there is a bond required at the value, the cost of the project. So that's in place there that gives the county protection, which in turn helps protect the land that way. But that's what the bond is for.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions at all? Again, we're reviewing the comprehensive plan and not the individual special use permit for this acreage. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments from the board here?
I have a question for Mr. Love. Is there, so the comprehensive plan currently does not have an express policy or plan about...
That's correct, their comprehensive plan predates any solar application here and really the advent of solar in Virginia. We're going to be retooling that and going, start that process in the fall to come up, to rewrite the comprehensive plan. And we will more address alternate energy. It's, we're mandated to address certain things, technology, broadband, traffic, and we'll also address alternate energies.
So from your perspective, is reviewing a project like this or others, you know, there's a concern others may come, can we do this, is it okay to do this piecemeal before the comprehensive plan speaks to this? Or in your opinion, is it better to get the comprehensive plan updated first?
Well, we have to, we have to gauge this to our current comprehensive plan that we've got, the application's in front of us. And I pulled out the sections that are applicable to this site. With this being a thirty-three acre site, I didn't see where, and the majority of the parcel is still remaining in timber. Whether that's harvested, replanted, or converted to a farm, you know, like pasture land, that use is still there right now. So, you know, that's why in my staff notes, I felt that this was, we're not losing this whole tract of land. And we haven't had that thousand-acre parcel yet. We've got a three-hundred-acre utility scale. This falls under the community solar sites, under the code of Virginia, they have to be under five megawatts. So this site can't grow. It would have to have a new interconnection and intent with Dominion. It'd have to be a separate project completely. It could only grow to five megawatts even where it is. It's limited to that by the code, under the community solar project.
And as the applicant mentioned, three megawatts is all that Dominion is asking for here, so it can't grow the way it's set up right now.
In theory, it could grow up to five.
It could grow up to five in theory if...
Let her answer that.
In theory, it could not. The study and the work we're doing with Dominion is at three megawatts, we cannot upsize the project. They studied the grid and how it impacts three megawatts. To go up anymore, we would have to completely redo that process, which is not...
So in practice, it can't go any...
Right, it can't go any higher. But back to what Mr. Love said, we have to look at our current comprehensive plan for this project, but we are addressing, updating the comprehensive plan for solar, for technology, and anything that we can.
So it's just, I asked the question because it's a little bit of a quandary. I get that this project is limited to what it is, three megawatts. I get that. But from the comprehensive plan's perspective, the comprehensive plan doesn't really speak to this. So from a substantial accord perspective, it's not in the plan.
Right.
But it's not necessarily against the plan either.
Correct.
Because the provisions decided in your report.
That's why the comprehensive plan, that's another side of the project, we need to update the comprehensive plan to handle any up-and-coming entities and industries like this.
Exactly.
So with everything said, first of all, I want to make an apology to Mrs. Sandlin. I would like still to consider myself a gentleman, so ladies first. I will be moving forward on every vote we take, it will be ladies first, and my apologies to you and to the audience here. Do we have a motion for the solar project as part of the comprehensive plan from the board?
Could you clarify?
Well...
We've got, I've got recommend motion in your packet, if anybody needs that. Your motion is, would be determine whether this is a substantial accord to the comprehensive plan.
So again, it is a little bit confusing as we look at it because the same applicant will be coming up briefly just to talk about the same project, but as far as a special use permit request. use permit request.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, but with some additional, slightly additional wording to what's in the packet.
Okay, please.
Okay. So as worded, I, I move that Elam Road Solar LLC proposed three-megawatt AC community solar energy facility as described in the special use permit application is substantially in accord with the Prince Edward County Conference of Plan and from which the goals, objectives, and strategies noted in the plan, provided it has the proper screening and, and buffers with respect to the roads and the adjacent properties. To me, that's the only way to really connect this to the conference of plan as it exists.
Correct. Mm-hmm. Yes. Yep. That, that makes sense, yes. We need to because that's what we have in front of us right now as far as comprehensive plan.
It's a good addition on that. Thank you.
Any other thoughts on the special use conditions we have?
Need a second.
You made a, yeah, you made the motion. Okay. Okay, do we have a second then?
Second.
Second, okay. We will take a roll now. Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Womack?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Leatherwood? Motion is passed. Thank you. And again, thank everybody for their input there. The public hearing now we have is the Elam Road Solar Project as it exists as a project. And I'll ask the applicant, is there anything else you want to speak of or speak to with regards to the, the special use permit there?
I appreciate that. Very much.
You've covered everything there. Okay.
Unless there's additional questions.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Love, do we have anything else other than, you want to just give a brief overview?
Well, this, yes, this is, again, this is a three-megawatt site. We've heard a lot about it tonight with the 2232 review. Again, this is to consider the uses. I have prepared a draft potential conditions, which the applicant has. These were prepared for a template that we had a legal team look, look previously on other solar sites. And so those conditions are what we have used in the past and then customized, of course, with this site.
Correct.
If you have any questions on that. But like I said, I don't have any other, any other information, I'll be glad to answer the questions. This will, if, if, if this is recommended and approved by the board, this site does have to go through Virginia Stormwater Management permitting, ENS permitting. Site plan approval still happens after this. They, they have a site plan, but final details, and again, speaking on the one comment that Mr. Womack had, tree plantings, we, we can, we can, we can address that in this state, this stage.
In the special use conditions there?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Love?
I have a broad question, please. A lot of, in the conditions, there are a lot of defined terms that aren't defined at the start of the conditions. There's, you know, like page or two of definitions, but there are a lot more defined terms that aren't in that list. Are they defined somewhere else?
Uh, I'm not, this was given to us by the law, the legal team. So I'm not sure which term you're missing.
It is a variety, and so in the interest of time and not to get bogged down on it, can I just get with you, you know, tomorrow, the next day?
We would do that, review it.
I'll just show you what I'm talking about.
Just review it to the next, next board meeting.
Exactly. Yeah.
With that, I will open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak relative to this project itself? Yes, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Rosa Thomas, and I'm in the Prospect District. I'm about three, maybe four miles from where this property is located. And I do know that the land has been in the family for probably about 200 years. They have not done any agricultural growing since probably the 50s or 60s. They do have lumber that's been harvested some, and they redo the, the trees, so. And so one guy specifically would like to plant crimson clover because he would like to continue his, expanding his bees. So there is still going to be some agricultural activities involved should the board choose to, to pass this. So I'd like to speak in favor of this proposal. And I'm sure that all of y'all know that you cannot turn on the news or the radio without hearing something about the negative effects of global warming and climate change. So the primary cause and solution to this problem, believe it or not, is energy. For years, we have generated electricity and heat by burning coal, oil, and gas. This, as we know, causes greenhouse gases such as carbon dioxide and nitrous oxide that traps the sun's heat within our Earth's atmosphere. The negative effects of these contributions cause our wildfire, droughts, and extreme weather. Truly, you can't turn on the news today without some small town in Virginia who's never had, you know, a lot of excessive rain, all of a sudden massive floods, and the whole town and community is wiped out. So really, the only true viable solution for our problems today is renewable energy. We've heard about this, you know, Lord knows Al Gore and his, you know, global warming, you know, back in the 70s and 80s. And sadly, you know, nothing has changed. And, you know, I assure you, I'm not a tree hugger, I'm not a, you know, woke person, but this is just the way that, that the world is. And truly, like it or not, in about 30 years, any of us that might still be here, 40 years, our cars are going to be electric. So things, things are changing whether we like it or not. Renewable energy comes from the source that will never run out. Examples are wind, water, geothermal, biomass, and solar energy. So truly, as long as the sun continues to shine, it will always continue to be a sustainable source of energy. According to the Dominion Energy website, more than 7 million customers in 16 different states energize their homes and businesses with electricity or natural gas from Dominion Energy. The company states that it is committed to sustainable, reliable, affordable, and safe energy and to achieving a net zero carbon dioxide and methane emissions from its general, from its power generation and gas infrastructure operations by 2050. Now, you might think, you know, this is 2023 and 2050 is a long way away, but, you know, truly, 27 years seems like a long time from now. But when you think about all the hype when the world turned to Y2K, you know, like where were you in 1999? Things go so fast. And believe it or not, it's been three years this month since our world shut down because of COVID-19. So time waits for nobody. It's, it's running, running like crazy. Prince Edward County does not experience the required wind that's needed to generate wind power, nor are we located near a rapid source of water like a large river or an ocean. What we do have, though, are landowners in our county who are willing to convert their unused agricultural land for renewable energy sources for the betterment of society and the generations to come. So many times, we might think that because we live in a very small community, I mean, I live in Elam, we have two stop signs and no stoplight, no post office. So you don't get a whole lot smaller than, than Elam. But we truly can make a very large impact. There are certain, that is certainly the case. By approving this project to move forward, Elam Road Solar LLC will truly help to make a huge role in taking, taking a huge role in helping to provide a clean, reliable energy source, not just to our little county of Prince Edward, but also to our state, to our nation, and also to the world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to speak? Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing. And again, as we mentioned, the previous public hearing for the, the tie-in to our comprehensive plan, the applicant basically reviewed the entire project here with the 33 acres and the fence, the buffering, and everything else there. So our job right now is to look at that project itself and make a motion on whether to accept it and move, or accept and move it forward to the County Board of Supervisors, to turn it down, or to table it. And I'm open to the board here. As we mentioned, the restrictions are three-megawatt max, so in turn, the acreage, and the project cannot change as far as the footprint.
Did you not approve a community solar project last year?
Yes.
Yes, we did. Yes.
I mean, you know, it's a Prince Edward County.
This will be the third.
Third one, yes. First one on this area right here.
We've got.
17 acres, 2.47.
Well, we've got one on, in Rice.
Yeah.
That's, that's, you're right, it is four. One predates me, Mr. Fuller, sorry.
Okay.
We've approved three, three in my time.
Right.
Well, we've approved two in my time.
But we have none, but we don't have any that have been presented to us, correct?
Yes.
Other than this one. I mean, you talk about, yeah, nobody has come to, nobody has.
His question, what's already.
Yeah, but I mean.
You're right, we do have a, we have a, we have a site that predates our alternate energy ordinance, and all of these documents we provided, the, with the conditions and all of that. When we had the utility scale, we, we had Sands Anderson look at the siding agreements, create siding agreements, create a revenue share ordinance for us, and a, a template set of conditions. But that's what we're using right now that we developed with Sands Anderson.
And that's what we used on the previous approvals.
That's true.
Correct.
Not the one in Rice.
Right.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
What was the vegetation you were talking about, Mr. Womack?
Uh, where they're leaving the buffer alone.
Right.
639 Elam Road. They calling for a 75-foot, leaving a hardwood buffer of 75 feet. That's mature hardwoods, I mean, it's stuff like this. So you'll be able to see all the way through it. I would like to see another, at least two rows of evergreens of some kind planted behind that at a staggered, so as they get bigger, it will block the view of the.
Like arborvitae's or something?
Right.
Makes sense.
Yes. Okay, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make it into a formal question.
Okay. That'd be one of the conditions we have in there.
Yes.
Did you, okay. Did you look at item D that talks about that?
I thought that was in the.
The screening in, in E, actually.
E.
Yep.
Is that a screen buffer or is that a cleared area, E?
We've got, we've got, air, air buffering says it should, it should be a screening.
Yes.
Okay.
So it'll, it'll be screened from E.
That'll take care of it. That'd be about two rows there.
Yes.
It, it cannot be seen through.
Yeah.
Right.
Any other special use additions or comments? We do need to consider this special use request, or then as far as a motion from the board.
So you're, you're good with what's already in there?
Yeah, because that's going to be 15 footers nicely with the way they plant trees and stagger them. That'll take care of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, or recommend approval, sorry. With just a, I guess I'll just put a proviso, I have an opportunity to get with Mr. Love and just clean up some of these definitions along the way.
But with the conditions we have here right now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second. Okay. Let's take a roll then. Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Leatherwood?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mr. Womack?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is passed. Special use permit has been approved by the County Planning Commission, will be passed on to the County Board of Supervisors at the next meeting. And again, I want to thank the applicant and for everybody here in the audience for your time. We do have one additional public hearing, which is a zoning ordinance amendment.
I'll get, let me get right into that.
If you could give us, Mr. Love?
Yes. The Board of Supervisors, I have requested staff to review all, all county codes to ensure that we have, we comply with the code of Virginia and also update our code as necessary. Subsequently to this request, County Minister and I, we've looked at other, looked at ordinances, looked at air ordinance, looked at the, what counties are doing around us in our region, and pulled various codes, created code, and put, put together a draft ordinance. At your January meeting, I entered, I, I handed that to you and let you take that and digest it, and we came back in February and created the, I call, final draft ordinance, which you see here. Like I said, in your packet, I provided you with some of the latest additions that had come in, been added to it, also replacement sheets. We advertised this ordinance in the formal herald. Since this is a countywide change to the ordinance that didn't require individual landowner notification, so it required public notification. So since I had that, I've had no comments, no calls, no one from the public has reached out to me at all. So, but we have had the ordinance in its entirety available.
Right.
And online, and it's been covered in, in the media. But like I said, again, we haven't had any concerns expressed to staff about the ordinance changes. These are mostly good housekeeping things to get our ordinance with some up-to-date terms and define things that were not in there previously. One thing we did do in looking at the existing ordinance in some of the residential zones, accessory buildings had a zero line offset. Talking with Public Safety EMS, that is bad news. That can create fire and rescue issues. You put buildings that can be to a property line against each other in a small residential area. If one garage caught on fire, it could burn the garage next to it because they could literally be touching technically by, by the way the code is right now. So we want to fix that. So we did, we fixed a couple of other things. And again, I went over more, a lot of this, I think, at the last meeting. But that's kind of where we are now.
So what we're looking to do right now is just really approve the, the zoning ordinance that we reviewed and made the amendments to, and you've updated.
Take a couple of comments and make a recommendation to pass this on to the board for their, their consideration and to reordain, reordain the entire zoning ordinance.
So that when it, if we approve it, then it is responsibility of the County Board of Supervisors to go through it and basically go through the same exercise we did with us cleaning it up first and then move forward there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. They may get it done in one meeting, they may get, it may take them a couple of meetings.
Correct.
I don't know yet.
With that in mind, opening the public hearing, does anybody wish to speak for or against the zoning ordinance amendment? The public hearing is then closed, and from the board's standpoint here, again, this is the, the process we went through at the January meeting and took the voluminous packet that Mr. Love gave us and mandated each of us look every page, every line, and come up with all the adjustments. Just kidding, Mr. Love, but.
Well, I appreciate everybody's work, hard work.
So as it stands right now, our, our goal would be to make a motion to approve as is and pass it on to County Board of Supervisors for their review and in turn possibly amend it and put through as part of the package for the county.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the ordinance amendment to amend and reordain Appendix B of the Prince Edward County Code in order to define new uses and to adjust, set thanks for accessory.
I'll say.
Thank you. Okay. Let's take a roll for a vote. Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mr. Womack?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Leatherwood?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
And Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Okay. The, it's moved and approved, we'll pass it on to county board of supervisors for their April meeting. Again, I want to thank everybody there. We have a little bit of housekeeping to do here. First one, Mr. Love, would be review of supervisor's actions.
Yes, the Blackwood Capital Development Site, the Wawa Site, was approved by the board of supervisors, so that site is moving forward. I'm expecting site plan and stormwater designs pretty quickly. I think they're going to pull the trigger, and I think we'll probably see them grading in spring or summer.
That's good. Any old business?
I don't.
Any old business from the board? Any new business?
One new business is, I noted, and I should have put a blank that out, our next planning commission meeting on the, on, it would have been the 18th, but it conflicts with the board of supervisors budget and talking to staff, we've got, I've got a, Mr. Powell can be available for the 20th, I think we talked about the 20th last, last month. I do have a live application.
Okay.
So we do need to meet.
Okay. Understood. Will the 20th...
I have a conflict.
Okay.
I, I can call in, but I won't be in town. Is it okay if I call in?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a quorum, the same thing?
We'd have a quorum if everybody else is able to be here. And again, calling is an option. Okay. So we'll be looking at Thursday, April 20th for our next meeting?
Yeah, I have a conflict unless I resolve the conflict.
Okay. But we should be good with a quorum then, okay. So Love, why don't we amend the date to the April 20th?
Yeah, April 20th.
Okay. If there's no other business by the board, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for your time, and everyone, thank you very much for your time here and your comments, much appreciated.